Okay, so I will call the BHS number six board meeting for May 2nd to order at 7:02. So, we are here and start with Clerk's report. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th?
So moved.
Seconded by Russ. All right, any additions, deletions, corrections, changes to those minutes? Everyone got them, yes? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of April 4th as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions?
No one's not here.
Sean's abstaining, okay. Excellent, all right. Any other communications that come before the board tonight?
Can I have a question about the Putney members?
Okay, yep, I can maybe help.
Is he still on?
No, Pat, because of job-related things, he officially resigned and the Putney school board is in the process of getting somebody for, as a Putney representative. So, we're just, we're waiting for them to do their process. Any other communications tonight? Any recognition of groups or individual visitors? We have a couple of visitors over there in the corner. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about or anything? No? Okay.
No, thanks.
All right. Excellent. All right. So, take a motion to approve, to enter into consent agenda.
Well, we can go into consent agenda.
Seconded by Bob. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's start with Finance, Building and Transportation.
Finance committee met on April 6th, I believe it was.
Wednesday the 13th.
Says Wednesday the 13th, excuse me. And we approved warrant numbers 1164, 1165, 1166, 1168, 1169, 1170 and 1171 in the amount of $697,310.75. There were no payrolls. And then we reviewed the endowment funds, the investment policies and awards. And our next meeting will be on this Thursday, 5th of May at 8:00 a.m. James King Conference Room.
Excellent, yes.
In addition to Ruth's mention that we talked about the awards and the funds and it was mentioned at that time that there hadn't been any scholarship applications for the Eames Scholarship. So, I was just wondering about that. There's a good deal of money available for anybody interested in arts. So it could be arts, music, architecture, photography, dance, music. So it's a pretty broad spectrum.
Right.
And so far, as of the 13th, there hasn't been applications.
I think we have three applicants now.
Oh, good.
You know, part of, you know, one of the problems is a lot of those students are opting for gap years. And so, you know, they're not really thinking about applying for scholarships. So we actually went and talked to senior advisories. We talked to them, we sent out another email to those seniors. You know, we continue to advertise in the newsletter. You know, we're doing a lot of outreach.
Oh, good. Excellent.
Yeah, I mean, excellent. In my mind, there should be 15 or 20 applicants.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
I think sometimes that on first reading, it's the scope of the availability of the scholarship doesn't immediately come forward. But it is, it is actually quite broad.
And it's for four years?
Yeah, well, three.
Three, I'm sorry.
Three or four?
I believe it's three.
Three, but it's, yeah.
It's significant.
Yes.
I just wanted to add one quick point that the main gist of our meeting on the 5th will be to interview, so to speak, the People's Wealth Management Group for managing the, what we call the non-Eames Endowment, which is the approximately million dollars that is not within the Eames Fund that the current manager is retiring from. We've solicited candidates and this people seems to be the most interested and we're going to sit down and talk to them at that. One other quick item is that we will be down, this has been perking for a little while. We'll be down an auditor. We have three auditors. And we will be down one because one is moving away and we're in the process and have found a great candidate who happens to live in Guilford. So instead of having three from Brattleboro, we have one from one of the other towns. And that will, will be up for full board approval. I forgot to mention it and that's probably why I didn't get on the agenda, but.
So our next meeting then?
Yeah. I will remember that.
Great.
As far as that, unless you rather somebody else.
No, it's fine, that sounds great. Is that it for Finance?
That's all I have.
All right, WSCSU Finance Committee.
We met Wednesday the 27th. We did the usual signing. We spend most of the time talking about the change in health insurance coming up. I don't see it as Ron or Frank here. But VHI has to be qualified into the Affordable Care Act to be a viable, well, qualified insurance company. And that decision probably is, it's to be decided within the next few weeks. So, once that step is passed, then, then there'll be a decision that'll have to be made to sign up with them or open it up to bids to other, other insurance options. So that was mainly what we talked about next meeting is Wednesday the 25th at 5:00 p.m. at Central Office.
Great.
Thank you.
I got a question. Russ, on the VHI, is this for the district-wide staff or?
You know, we didn't ask whether, do you know, I mean, somebody on the Finance Committee, but do you know if, if the SU Board signs it for the whole supervisory union? Or whether it's each, each district signs it, so there's a high school sign.
So is there any thought given for like the one-sponsored plans, the Health Connect plans?
The, and the others, yeah.
Well, the ones that most people in the want to have to subscribe to.
Oh, oh.
It's either MTP or.
You mean just have all individuals apply for their own, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they take groups.
I mean, we're talking about whether to go there, do an RFP to find out what other, what other companies would do. But we're a large enough, well, VHI has been, has been sort of self-insured. The organization of VHI is that. So I'm not sure whether that would help out at all. I mean, there's contractual issues as well, but my hunch is by having such a large pool and I imagine that our, our risk is a relatively good risk pool that we have some negotiating power, but I don't know. I wish I could hear it, but that question couldn't come up.
All right, anything else from WSCSU Finance? Planning a policy.
Not that. Not as TCC.
Oh, neither is TCC, okay. BAMS Committee.
The BAMS Committee met this morning and I am now the Chair of the BAMS Committee. Thank very much to my cohort there. Keith gave us a pretty good presentation of BAMS. And we went over enrollment numbers, which right now there are 321 BAMS students. And then he went over the anticipated enrollment for next year, about 300. So there'll be probably 140 incoming seventh graders next year also. And then Keith gave us a really interesting overview on proficiency-based learning and what it means for BAMS and how it's related to all these different sort of buzzwords that have been flying around like flexible pathways. And then how the next year, they'll probably have student-led conferences, which I thought was really interesting, and how the personal lesson plan, personal learning plans will be used in the student-led conferences. So it was a good informative meeting and.
Great.
That's what I had.
Excellent. Moon to Regional Career Center Committee.
Career Center Committee did meet on April 29th and the primary item of business was reviewing with Michael the upcoming Vermont Agency of Education five-year review that happens every 15 years. Is that what you told us? In any case, there will be a review. Michael may want to talk more about it, but it'll be on May 10th and 11th. There'll be three reviewers here from the AOE and they will be visiting with students, parents, staff, board member, and we'll be making class visits. So he was filling us in on that.
Great.
Anything else?
No, I think you covered it very simply.
Excellent. All right, WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee. So I'm gonna, there's something for that side. So coming around is the most recent working draft of the Articles of Agreement, which the Act 46 Study Committee has been working on. We've, as a group, have been meeting pretty much weekly, going over things, adding things, attracting things. There's still a lot of questions, but this is the most active, or the most recent draft of the Articles of Agreement. Much of it is stuff that we've talked about before. As you look through it, changes are, and those of Ian and other people that were at the meeting last week, there was discussion at the end to decide how are changes going to be made. And I believe anything that's in bold is, is new or is, is still in discussion mode. Everything that's in regular font is where we are at. And one of the big conversations, and I heard some of my fellow board members having this conversation before we started our meeting tonight, having a little conversation, was about the makeup of the new board. And there's a chart about that on page eight in this packet. Which if, if you look at this as page eight, the top chart there is essentially how our board here is made up of, with five members from Brattleboro and one each from Dumerson, Guilford, Putney and Vernon to make a nine-member board. And we've had lots of discussions at the Act 46 Committee level about the makeup of the board and really being equitable between all five towns so that one town couldn't come in and sort of, and take over the entire situation. So if you look down at the bottom chart, that's the proposal of a way to make things a little bit more balanced. And so we would have two at-large members on this, on the new board is the way that it would work out. And the at-large members could be from any town. So, you know, if both at-large people were, say, from Vernon, it could be, the Vernon rep has to be from Vernon, the one from Vernon has to be from Vernon, but the other two could be from Vernon too, for instance. So you could have three from Vernon, which would then be the same as what the representation is from Brattleboro, for instance. Those are the at-large members could come from any place.
Important note on that is that in that second model with the at-large, all of those members are voted on by everybody. All the towns vote in everybody's elections.
Right. So that's the other thing too, is that as a registered voter, and no matter what town you're a registered voter in, if you're part of one of the five towns, you would vote for all nine of those board members. So they would say, you know, here's the three names of the people running from Brattleboro or five names of people running from Brattleboro, it would be, they'll vote for no more than three. And there's, you know, two people from Dumerson, vote for no more than one, that kind of thing.
Two questions.
Yeah.
One is, is it an eight-person board or a nine-person board?
It's now a nine.
It's now a nine-person board. The discussions previous to our meeting last week was to have it to be an eight-person board. There was a lot of feeling, I think, about wanting it to be an odd number, but not being too large. So trying to fluctuate it in such a way that no one community, because if we do it the way our board is currently made up, it has to be proportionally. But if we do the at-large system, it is.
Because the print, the writing, the bold print says eight.
Yeah. Yeah, it's that, like I said, this is being a working draft, it should say nine.
The other question, which is perhaps more interesting, is, is why, why are all of them voted at-large? I mean, what's the logic behind it?
That's, if we do it proportionally, like this board is set up, the five, 1-1-1, one, then each town votes for their own. The reason we can do it in a way that is different from strict proportionality is because they're all voted for at-large. So the proportionality is accounted for by, by that.
So the only way not to have a five, 1-1-1-1 board is to have everybody voted at-large?
Yes.
So that was the trade-off.
And that was the way to try to balance out so that essentially Brattleboro couldn't run the whole show and not.
Just like we do here.
Like we do here, exactly. To, to not let the, to have all the towns have an equal voice in what goes on.
Well, the point I made is that, you know, we have the, we don't have any problem with this here on this board. So I really think a lot of what we're, what we're doing here is a, a solution without a problem.
Yeah.
It's about perception.
It may or may not be, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, it is dealing with. Here, we're all in the same building. And, and if there's a unified board, there'll be lots of buildings in all sorts of different towns. There is a little bit of a different dynamic there, which may speak to a different.
And I think that.
Comfort level.
And I think that your comfort level is exactly what I think about it too, Russ. I mean, from the conversations, I feel like I've gotten to know people from the other towns that I didn't really know if I knew at all as part of the Act 46 situation. And I think that, you know, as much as, I think somebody said it once at whatever extra visit meeting, like we're trusting everybody around the table because we've gotten to know each other and we feel comfortable with each other, but that doesn't mean that, you know, 10 years down the road when the election hap, a new election happens, that it could be completely different group of people. So I think there is a level of wanting to make sure that it's not just about comfort. It's about making sure that representation is happening in a way that's, that everybody's good with and is equitable as possible. I know that not everyone's had a ton of time to look through this. Does anybody else, Ian or anybody that's been at these meetings, because Sean and Bob have both come to a lot of our meetings, want to point anything else out in the work?
Well, if not here, but we did kind of skip the, the big news from the last meeting, which is that the town of Vernon has voted to opt out of the study committee.
Yes.
And we are still waiting on clear answers on how that affects everything.
Everything.
It is quite possible that they may still have to be part of the vote and the union even though they have opted out of having any voice in what this looks like and it makes it seem like not a very good plan, but.
This is, I think, the first time that that issue has come up in this whole process. And it's a little bit vague even at the state level, the last I knew, as to what's going to hap, have to happen.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's, it's a, it's a big unknown for everybody, I think, that we're. As I think we tend to do a lot, we tend to lead the way in a lot of different ways. And this is just one of those ways that we're kind of leading the way in something that no one ever, I don't think they ever considered that somebody would start being part of the study committee and stop. So, once we get some opinion on that legally and otherwise, we'll have more information. But until then, we're.
When you second vote, Rick.
Well, one of the things that, I also, we also wanted to, and the other, all of the other, the five-town boards are meeting in the next week or so. And they're voting on whether or not to approve merger or not, or the other four, I should say, without Vernon. And for us, because we're part of the union, a union high school board, as a board, it's more of, we're being informed. And Ian and I have been asked to be representatives from Brattleboro on the committee, but we don't have to vote as a board. But, you know, if people have opinions one way or the other, I think that's a good thing to share with the Act 46 group.
But what vote were you asking of?
Isn't there like a vote whether to go ahead or not?
A vote of whom?
Of, does, like, for instance, does Dumerson vote independently?
Well, there would be, there would be a special, a special vote that would go out to the electorate in all the towns named in this, once this document is done.
First, the study committee will have to vote to, to send it out.
To send it.
Once that vote happens, it will go out to the towns.
And then there'll be a special election at your, in your individual towns. At that same time, this new board configuration will also have to be voted for.
I think, I think the vote will happen this Wednesday at 7:00 at the Academy School.
Yeah, I think, I think the Act 46 Committee.
The Act 46 Committee, because they, if they did not, they sent the draft form up to the AOE and so the AOE is reviewing it in draft form. But their next meeting is on the 14th of May. And if they don't have the vote in the final draft of the articles agreement by then, I think they probably wouldn't, well, you can't have it.
There's not enough warning time.
There's not enough time.
So I believe the vote will happen this Wednesday, 7:00.
To leave the committee to then send it to the voters. And then sometime in June, it'll be a special election.
So Dumerson votes not to go, would be.
Are you talking about the state board or the Dumerson town as a whole?
Dumerson town as a whole.
Oh, yeah.
So they decide not to go or join or?
Yeah.
And they also vote on a, on a representative that won't be needed?
Yes.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah. It's.
Because you, that you don't know what way they're going to vote. And even as an individual voter, if you're voting no, you may get overruled. So you still want to be voting for that representative.
Yeah, and I pointed that out, so we could go today, actually. Folks from the VSBA and stuff came down and met with Committee, Act 46 Committee people from all over Wyndham County. And I pointed that out and they were like, unfortunately, that statute, it's been state statute for 60 years or something like that, that's the way it has to be. So we just have to, it logically seems weird, but we just have to go with it because it's the law.
That's the way the union was established, was 1950.
Right.
1952, what year was it?
57, I believe.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. So we're following the same statutes.
Right.
It's a.
Yeah, she put, she picked up a big book, the woman, somebody from the VSBA picked up this.
Donald Russo's.
Yeah, and she's like, it's in here. Like, okay, thanks. Anyway, so this is the draft form. As Sean pointed out, Wednesday, the Act 46 Committee will be voting whether or not to send it to the voters or not. And then they'll, if that, if it does pass, Act 46 Committee, then there'll be a special election in June.
And this is the form, this is the copy that's been, that's gone up to the state board?
Yeah, they're looking, they're looking at it as a draft form, once we officially release it and corrections.
The other thing to note is that just because we vote, if we vote to send this up, doesn't mean this is done.
Right.
It's a back and forth with the state. And they'll make advice, we'll, we'll make changes.
They may say, Article 7, you might want to change this, or in Article 4, you might want to tweak that or whatever, you know, because they can, they'll make those decisions.
I think it is the second week in May, so that's coming right up, that the Board of Education is going to meet, the state board. And once the state board has it in their hands, then it's a done date. And there is no more discussion, so.
Which is why they want, which is why we wanted to get some opinion ahead of time.
Yeah. And actually, the petitions were supposed to be the town clerks today, but they aren't. So I presume they will be by Thursday. Because the petitions come out and then the petitions have to be returned to the town clerks by the 23rd of May. So even if they come out on Wednesday, if the at-large members have to get 60 people, signatures of 60 individuals, and I think they can be of any town. But the, all the representatives from the individual towns have to get 30 signatures and they have to be from a specific town.
Right.
And you'll return those to the town clerks. And then the town clerks will make a copy of those and send them to all five towns. So the five towns can verify that, yes, indeed, that person that signed it is a member of that town as a voting member. So, but, so there's quite a bit of work just collecting the signatures between now and the 23rd of May. Here it is the 2nd, so.
Unfortunately, we can't even get petitions until we've actually decided on the structure.
I think the petitions, of course, as I asked, that was the last question I asked Alice at the last meeting and she indicated that they probably be there this week. So I presume they'd be there Thursday morning.
That's true, because I guess the petition language doesn't change, whether there's nine or eight or.
And you have to get them because if the day is the 2nd, you have to return on the 23rd. So that's 21 days for anybody that's interested in running on any of the five towns. You have to get the, decide any, get the signatures, or not decide, but still get the signatures. You can always not name the ballot or your petition.
Can you run both as, for a town slot and an at-large?
I don't think so.
Your name can only appear on the ballot once.
But at this point, it hasn't been decided which way we so have.
I think it's, I think it's this way.
Well, we, we have both still here.
Yeah.
This is the way we're leaning for, so yes, I think this is going to be it.
The bottom one, page eight.
But that's.
Which would be three, 1-1-1-1, and then two at-large, it could be from any town.
Yeah.
And the, and the terms are described on the next page, so.
So that's only for the initial election.
Right.
Eventually, they will all be three years.
Three-year rotation.
So that's just so that the elections are spread out.
But it's interesting because the at-large has a one-year slot and a two-year slot for the at-large position.
Right, just to get them into the cycle.
Yeah.
Which is when this board shrank size from 17 to nine, that's what we did too.
Right.
Is that people, they were, people were initially on for shorter or greater length of time to get everybody into a three-year cycle.
So the riskiest thing if you want to run would be to take an at-large because that may disappear. But if you're, any of the towns will certainly have.
Well, the at-large will be at the clerks after the decision was made on the format. So I think when you go to the clerk's office to pick up the petitions, it'll be self-explanatory. You'll either get, you know, run from this individual town or you could run at-large. But there are only two at-large.
And when you run at-large, is your town going to be next to your name?
That's a good question. I presume so.
Yeah, I would assume your name would be next to it, just to look at it now.
Dumb deal.
And thank you, Ruth.
One little item you left out. If they vote to build this roof, we're going to have a town, the towns vote at some point. In between there, there have got to be, now it's gone right out of my head, hearings.
Public meetings. Public meetings, yep. Yeah, there should be a, a large in all five towns, a pretty, a big, big, big public education so that people know what they're voting for.
And there already has been.
There's been some.
Guilford's had three.
I would certainly urge everybody to attend a public hearing so they know what they're getting into.
At least one.
Yes.
Yes, at least one.
Because it's a pretty complicated issue and, you know, more stuff comes up all the time.
Anything else for Act 46?
Anyone that hasn't come to the Act 46 meetings, you should, they're, uh, interesting.
They're entertaining. They, they are entertaining.
It's one word.
Yeah, yeah. All right, is there anything else for consent agenda this evening? Is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'm hoping to approve consent agenda.
Ruth?
Seconded by Lori.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or potential? All right, so we went to administrative reports, when we start this end, just to bring that. Thanks, Ricky.
So, on, let's see, forgot the date. A few weeks ago, our Skills USA student participated in Skills USA Vermont States in Burlington, eleven of them participated. The students that have participated were Addison Clark in the contest Crime Scene Investigation, Tyler Clemente participated in Mobile Robotics Technology, Teagan Day, Architectural Drafting, Andrew Downs, Crime Scene Investigation, Cody Evans, Criminal Justice, Brandon Niemeczek, Automotive Service Technology, Aiden Turnage, Mobile Robotics, Shaylene Rivera, Crime Scene Investigation, Devon Roberts, Technical Drafting, Teresa Snow, Medical Terminology, and Braxton Stacy in Criminal Justice. The following students in these competitions placed with medals, silver in Crime Scene Investigation, three-person team included Andrew Downs, Addison Clark, and Shaylene Rivera, bronze in Architectural Drafting, Teagan Day, and Mobile Robotics was a two-person team, Tyler Clemente and Aiden Turnage did well. Great, great experience for these students. Some of the individuals that placed received scholarships for college, up to, upwards of five to ten thousand dollars for our next year towards BTC and CCV. And if you see any of these students, congratulate them, a job well done, very proud of the accomplishments in representing WRCC. We have been hosting Tech Fund Fridays, I've mentioned a few times in my reports this year, and this is, these have been happening the last Friday of every month, and I want to thank Jana Crass, our Outreach Coordinator, for really being instrumental with these events, and planning, and getting teachers together, and allowing our eighth-grade population and ninth-grade population to participate, thanks to Keith for supporting this as well. It's a great opportunity for students to experience the Career Center, what we have to offer, and hopefully they'll experience something fun, and remember that three years down the road, and the impact that they, that our teachers and student helpers made on them. We have focused on specific programs in WRCC in hopes of introducing the students to CTE, and to increase enrollment, of course, is our goal. So, some of the activities that were included, were building mini catapults in construction, NASCAR pit crew experiences in automotive, and machinery rodeo we just held this past Friday, and machines included a tractor, skid steer, a riding mower, forklift, and a bulldozer. Granted, eighth graders were running this machinery. Students were given proper safety demonstrations prior to using the equipment, with the current students in the classes facilitating the event, as the teachers observed. And I have to say, I have witnessed about fifteen, twenty minutes of this, and the students were absolutely outstanding teachers with the younger students, and showing them the proper and safe techniques on how to operate machinery, it was really neat to see. They really took it seriously. So, it's a great, great out-of-the-box thinking event for our students as well, to participate in something like this. Next month, the Future Business Leaders of America are planning the activities for our last Friday event before the end of the school year, and this is being coordinated by the groups officer, so I'm looking forward to what they have in store for us and the students. A huge thank you to Bob Simeon, the construction teacher, Jim Valliere, automotive instructor, Dennis Hamilton, forestry, Sam Rowley, horticulture, Aaron Nelson, forestry, Perrin, Chef Warner, Chef Fernandez, for taking the time after school to create these great hands-on activities for our younger population. As, what do you mentioned earlier, we will have an upcoming AOE visit next Tuesday and Wednesday, for a day and a half they'll be here, three representatives within the CTE Department of the Vermont AOE. They will be conducting a five-year evaluation here at the Career Center, in accordance with sixteen VSA, fifteen thirty-three, and fifteen thirty-four State Board of Educational Rule, twenty-three seventy-seven technical program evaluation. This visit is in conjunction with our work that we've been completing with the Southern Regional Education Board Initiative, School Improvement Initiative. Since we are not a NEAS-rated school anymore, this is a second-party evaluation process that we will have to go through, and I look forward to this process. As what you mentioned, the process will include interview with community members, students, members, parents, sending school principals, and Ron Staley, our superintendent. The review, the review will focus on three areas, that will be stakeholder satisfaction they're looking at, quality of environment to delivery of instruction, and compliance with state statutes, rules, and goals. So, it should be an interesting time, and I invite all of you, any of you, if you have a chance to attend our Brad meeting, Tuesday beginning at noon, and that'll be our welcome for the AOE, and I'll be giving a overview and history of the Career Center, and past and present and the future of where we see it going. So, should be a very interesting process. All right, that's all. The meetings will be held here in the Kusak, starting at noon, with a free lunch. That's all I have.
Good, excellent, thank you. All right, Mr. Perrin?
Sure, thank you. The big news, of course, for the students is that prom is this Saturday night, eight to twelve. Sure to be a great event, as it always is. I'm very pleased that it's being held here at BUHS, which is nice. Whenever we have it here, it certainly saves money for the class and lets them do more in terms of events and fun stuff during prom itself. That will be from eight to twelve this Saturday night, so if you have a tuxedo in line around, come join us. We had a couple of trips that go off to various corners of South America. Thirteen students went with Dan Brayden, Michelle Hood, and Kate Margitis, they went to Belize, and this is not to make you jealous, but they spent some time doing some concepts that they learned doing pre-course reading, and they learned about the history, geography, geology, and biology of Belize, and then the eight days in Belize included hiking in the rainforest, visiting a K-8 school, hanging out at a Mayan temple, studying the diversity and ecosystem health of coral reef, and seeing various animals at the Belize Game Preserve. A big theme of that program is the relationship, as Belize becomes a tourist spot, how do they balance conservation with ecotourism? And this is the third time that Dan's taken this trip, he does it every other year, and it's a great trip, he does a phenomenal job getting the students ready, they do a lot of pre-trip work, they read quite a bit, and they learn a lot about Belize before they go off on the trip, so congratulations to Dan and Michelle and Kate for that. We also sent students to Costa Rica, thirteen intermediate and advanced Spanish students went to Costa Rica from April ninth through the twenty-second. That led, that was led by Spanish teacher Angie Dodd and our own retired Maggie Cassidy, who I guess isn't really retired. They hosted these same students in January, and so it was an exchange with our sister school, they attended class at the Colejo Tecnico, visited the rainforest, did some sightseeing in San Jose, and then spent three days near the Aramal volcano, and had a great time. They had a potluck dinner with their host families, and they got to see all the various sights with their host families, and did homestays that were extensive, so that's always a wonderful thing, and our, as you know, our Modern Classical Language Department does a wonderful job of establishing long-distance relationships with sister schools that go on for many, many years, so we're very proud of the work they've done there. Locally, Ryan Taggart, one of our students, was awarded a Marjo Foundation Grant for his study entitled Sugar Maple Sapling Growth in Soil pH in Wyndham County. Michelle Hood's going to mentor him, and he's received funding for the first round, and he'll continue to do that work through next spring. We have a great relationship, thanks to Michelle Hood with the Marjo Foundation, we've had several students get these awards, and they always do incredible work when they do that. And it's all about local ecology, which is a nice thing to see, and so his work, I'm looking forward to seeing his sugar maple award. We also had two students go to the VPA, that's the Vermont Principal Association Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Fair in March, Katia Brock, and Peyton Eisler, and Kim Bao, did work on emotion and sleep, and the application of biotechnology in the Hematological Society. They did incredible work, I had a chance to read their abstracts, and if you saw the, the level of work they did in their abstract, and then you looked at their experimental design, simply amazing what they, what they've done, so that's great to see as well. Um, let's see, I gotta get a list here. We also are proud to have several students recognized for Governor's Institute of Vermont this summer, going to the Arts Institute, we have Pooja Meyer and Madden Sullivan, going to engineering, we have Kailin Boyd and Elliot Franz Holmes, for Environmental Science and Technology, Julia Bell Young and Mira Anna Siri, for Information Technology, Digital Media, Colin Costa Walsh and Gabe Popsher, Reece Sklenya will be going for the Math Science Institute, and Olivia How will be going for the Young Writers Institute. And, you know, I want to thank Mr. Woodward for his work with the Governor's Institute, and Liz DeNord as well, and our students come back from these transforms, they come back with great ideas, I think we all know students that have gone to a Governor's Institute and have come back with a, a career path in mind, and a college track in mind, so it's an incredible experience, and we're a little proud of those students for being accepted. This Wednesday, we've had a work group, working on proficiency-based learning, and getting us ready for the transition that begins next year, and, you know, as I've talked with the board before, and I'm glad that Keith mentioned it with the BAMs Committee, our focus next year is going to be instructional practices and how they affect proficiency-based learning, and we've had a work group working, they're gonna do a full day of work this Wednesday. One of the things coming out of that work group on Wednesday will be an outline for a parent meeting in late May, so we can get parents in and talk to them a little bit. You know, one of the big things that people are worried about is that we're getting rid of grades, and we're getting rid of transcripts, none of those things are true, but this group has been instrumental since last June, getting some work done, laying the groundwork for us, so I'm very proud of that group, and I'm hoping that they're gonna step forward early next fall and educate you as part of the Education Series. The leadership team at BUHS is doing our action planning, that's a half-day from eight forty-five to noon on May twenty-third. Traditionally, one or two board members have attended, I would invite you to attend.
What was the timing against?
It's eight forty-five to eleven-thirty, and I believe it's here. And it would be great if you could, one or two board members could come and participate.
What was the date again?
Uh, the twenty-third, I believe it's a Monday. And finally, we have been looking for a math department head for a little while, and I am pleased to recommend Mr. Brian Waddy for the math department head position, vacated by Mr. Lanes resignation. We look high and low this time, and did not have a lot of applicants, we had two, we had two applicants for the position, we interviewed them both. The committee was Michelle Hood, Chris Day, math teachers, Michelle Page at Aaron Hillow, and Ian Torry as well. You know, Brian did an outstanding job in his interview, and taught a great sample lesson for us. He's got a, a strong emphasis on curricular design and technology, and I think that's gonna benefit, benefit all of us at BUHS, but especially our math department, as we look at focusing more energy and common assessments in the upcoming years. So, I would ask the board approve the selection of Brian Waddy for next year as our department head in math.
We would like to move that we approve the selection of Brian Waddy as math department head.
Second.
Moved in second, any other discussion questions?
As Steve's mentioned, I was on that hiring committee, and this guy is very impressive.
And how do you spell his last name?
Fine, good question. W-U-O-T-I.
All right, any other, any other questions? All right.
Steve, did you and Ron go to China last?
We did.
Could, at a subsequent meeting, could you give us a little report on that, please?
Absolutely, sure, we need to vote on this, teacher.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I thought, I'm, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, all those in favor of hiring Mr. Waddy as the new math department head? Steven, would you say aye?
Aye.
All right. Opposed or abstained? All right, excellent, done.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have a question?
No. We looked at him and asked, I said, "Well, I thought that was my time."
Yes. I just have a question, I wonder if you could just give us a quick update on the entry system, is that all in place now?
That is, we have one more access panel put in, but that, that's done. Also, over April break, the DVR system upgrades for the camera system were done.
I noticed that there was an issue with some cameras, like, based on reviewing the vouchers, and I was wondering if that was all squared away?
Right. Some of the cameras were not, just aren't working. We have one more camera, that's an analog camera on the corner of the auditorium, that you're gonna see at finance this Thursday, to replace that with a digital camera. So, so, yeah, when they went through, you know, some of the cameras, and, and we were lucky, because, you know, some of the cameras that failed were cameras that were very, you know, were hot, and we had, we rented the lift to work on the baseball grandstand, and so we were able to just kind of move it over the same day, use the lift. And so, our next plan, when we replace that last camera, is to do that at the same time we do the bulb work on Nata which we have, so, which will be an incredible undertaking.
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, anything else, Mr. Perrin?
Nope.
All right.
Ricky?
Yes.
I have a question, Mr. Perrin. Since we have people going to warmer climates, is there any concern about the Zika virus?
That came up, and, and again, tribute to Dan Brayden's preparation, you know, he brought that up to me in December, and over December break, we had a meeting with all the parents, and we kind of said, you know, "Here are the risks of Zika virus, you know, here, here's where it spread." It hadn't at that time been identified in Belize, I think it has been since, and we gave the parents the option to, you know, either choose to not go on the trip or to go on the trip. I believe two parents drew their children from the trip, so we refunded all the money that we could to those parents. But, you know, common, you know, the common logic now is that we'll see Zika virus, you know, in most of the United States this summer, so, as it moves over.
Any others?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lanyard?
Well, I'll give you the report on China for Steve, that he spent about twenty hours a day in the air playing, watching PG three, PG thirteen movies, and got beat a lot in ping pong.
I did not lose one ping pong match. I backed off before I could lose.
This, I'm gonna start by reviewing a few dates, before I forget, you see a teacher tomorrow, tomorrow's National Teachers' Day, I know that over time here, we've come up with a national day for everything, but National Teachers' Day has always been kind of a traditional day. but National Teachers' Day has always been kind of a traditional day and one of those national days. And so if you see a teacher, thank them. We have, the high school did their SBACK testing, which is a Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. They did that a few months ago, but we chose to delay a little bit. And so we got all of our testing coming up soon. We start with the, so just forgive me with the acronyms. The Old Kneecap is still there for science. So we do the New England...
Common Assessment.
What's it called?
Common Assessment.
Common Assessment. Common Assessment Program for Science for eighth graders only. And that's a pencil and paper test that you have to do all the packaging and mailing and, you know, it's kind of old-school now. The eighth graders will be doing that the week of the 10th, around the 10th, 11th. I assume the juniors in the high school are doing that soon as well. And then, and then we do the SBACK, which is the English Language Arts and the Math. Those would be the subsequent weeks after. And that's a computerized test. You guys took some samples yesterday, but both seventh and eighth graders would take that. In fact, it's grades three through eight for the SBACK, and then grades 11. And the SBACK test, it has three major components. It has a computer adaptive test, which is sending the kids through a series of questions, and the computer adjusts based on their answers. And then the second day, there's a performance task. There's a classroom lesson taught in math and in English. And then a test based on the, not the content delivered in the task, but in the class, but there's a test that is not computer adaptive on the performance test. So it's basically three, three kind of days of tests in our schedule and for each of those. It's about seven to eight hours of testing and prep for the English Language Arts and each for the English Language Arts and the math. And the kneecap is a little less than that. So we're getting ready for that. I actually like the SBACK in the computer stuff. It is a little challenging trying to do both systems and prepping teachers on how to proctor all of that because I use all the staff and it's different rules. Tomorrow, our district is being monitored by the state special ed. So tomorrow, BAMs is being visited by a couple of representatives in the state who come and interview people. They're in the entire SU this week and going from school to school and they have a series of questions and that kind of stuff. So hopefully that's all good. At the end of this week, May 6th is traditionally the diversity day in the district. And so at BAMs, we are, the Kayla Sims is a diversity coordinator who has set up a, they're called the Trevini School of Dance. And they're coming to essentially dance, a cultural dance assembly. And then I think it's mainly women dancers. And then we're going to do a series of work on gender. We're going to watch films and then on gender. And then have discussions in our advisories based on the film and some questions that we've kind of prepped the kids for. So that's our diversity day, and we're excited about that. All the staff and students will participate in that. A lot of other things happening in our transition with the elementary schools. Last month, my counselors and myself visited each of the elementary schools. And this month, it's kind of reversed, and they're coming here. Today was the first group. Guilford came today. And they just visit for an hour, hour and a half or so. They meet with our stu, some of our students meet with small groups of kids and tell them about the school and answer questions, and then they get to tour the building and that kind of stuff. So it's part of our transition plan. A lot of those schools visiting this week. Long-term, the next concert's the Pops Concert on May 19th. And that's a fun concert. I've talked about our concerts quite a bit in the past. And if you haven't checked one out, certainly that would be a good one. Long-term planning, our last day of school, I believe for all of BU6 is 14th of June. It's a half-day, 12:30 dismissal. And our move-up is June 15th, if any of you tend to come to the BAMs move-up. It's June 15th, which is a Wednesday evening. It's a packed place. We packed the high school gym, standing room only. And it's a nice event, so you're all welcome. And last but not least, I have two students who have been recognized. Gabrielle Liracho, who's one of our new English teachers, had our students enter into a writing contest called Letters About Literature. This was the first year they, the state ran this. And Sierra O'Hearn, who's a seventh-grade student from Dover, won first place in the state in her division. And so she has, we received a really nice letter from State Vermont inviting them to her and her teacher and parents to the State House on May 20th to be recognized by the, what's the, Secretary of Education. And Katrina Tao was an honorable mention. So maybe two students who did very well on that. So congratulations to them, and that's all I have. I'll see anybody who has any questions.
Thanks. Any questions? Do you have anything from central office, anybody? And I don't have anything. Set it for administrative reports. And looking at our agenda, we don't have unfinished business unless there's something that is unfinished that people, that I'm not aware of. And we have nothing under new business. Huh?
My goodness.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There being no other business, can we adjourn?
And seconded by Lori. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you close your extensions? All right.